I'd like to call to order the San Carlos City Council meeting for December 12th, 2016, if everyone will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
No changes from staff, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ergens, is there a report from closed session?
No report from closed session.
All right, we'll move on to Item 5, Council Communications and Announcements, and we'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two, one of which is a brief presentation, which I'll get to in a second. The first one, though, is, people probably are aware, I know, the council is about how we opted to enroll the city in the Peninsula Clean Energy Program, which is a nice way, rather than putting photovoltaic panels on your roof, of buying power that's much cleaner than you would get from PG&E. However, recently, I heard some information about how there's a possibility, given the incoming Trump administration, that the economics of energy generation may shift and that, basically, the price of fossil fuel-generated energy might come down substantially. That's potentially a concern to me because the way the Peninsula Clean Energy Program works is when we enrolled San Carlos in it, it's an opt-out program. So, basically, unless a resident in San Carlos getting a mailing says, "I don't want to be part of this program," they're going to be part of the program. And that's the way the state authorized it. But my concern is if there's a possibility that the net effect of people not noticing what's going on in their mail is that their utility bills go up because we authorized it, that's potentially a concern for me. So, I want to see if there's any interest on the council in discussing this matter to sort of assess the risk. And, you know, I did check with Mr. Malpe. If we thought the risk was great enough, we can actually opt out of the program. But that would actually deny the possible benefits to the residents. So, it's an agenda-setting question. Is there anybody else who's concerned enough about the issue that we would like to discuss it?
Sure. Maybe I'll just make a few comments as the representative on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board. I think there obviously is some concerns about what's going to happen in the energy markets with the new Trump administration with respect to fossil fuels. That being said, it's pretty speculative. We don't know. Nothing has been proposed. And then, secondarily, the other general trend in the market is that the price of renewable energy continues to go down, and other counties throughout the state continue to create new community choice aggregation programs, which is what Peninsula Clean Energy is, which is adding to increasing the overall demand for renewable energy, which further drives down the price. I would say, you know, as the board member, I'm certainly not supportive of us removing ourselves from Peninsula Clean Energy. I think it's a great program. And, you know, I would also encourage you to reach out to the board and to, you know, the county supervisors, et cetera, to discuss it. But I'll see if there's anybody else who wants to put that on the agenda, Mark's suggestion.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to ask, as I said, because I don't want to, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity, in case people's utility bills do go up, that we had an opportunity to discuss it and react ahead of time. So, Crystal, if you could fire up that presentation, and I'll see if I can remember how to use the clicker, which I always seem to have trouble with. Just a brief set of, and I'm, and once again, having trouble with it. Is it, the little green thing is saying "on." There we go. Okay. Well, I pressed the button so many times. Could you go back to the beginning? If you wouldn't mind? I don't, okay, thank you. If you could take us back to the beginning, I would appreciate it. You need to go back to the first page. Sorry, folks. I suppose I should say technical difficulties beyond my control, or certainly capabilities. So, recently, the topic of conflicts of interest has come up in the context of some discussions that have been taking place at the Parks and Rec Commission involving North Crestview Park. And I just want to educate people a little bit on the way things are set up. Basically, there were a number of folks who felt that, because at least one of the members of the Parks and Rec Commission was part of a volunteer group that represents a particular interest, namely soccer, in San Carlos, that they should conflict themselves out. They should step off the commission when it's discussing that particular topic, the topic of what to do with North Crestview Park. The reality is, and I'll explain why, that's actually not so. And that's in part because I think there's a conflict in using the term "conflict of interest." We're all familiar with conflicts of interest where we have different opinions from each other. But the law takes a narrow review on what constitutes a conflict of interest that you need to react to and take yourself out of the decision-making process. Basically, what it's rooted in is the notion of, are you getting something to get a particular outcome to come out? Either voting to put something in the park or voting not to put something in the park. But you have to get some compensation for it. That compensation doesn't have to be cash. It can be other valuable consideration, job offer, whatnot. Job offer could be for a family member. Doesn't have to be directly to you. But if there's not a payment of some kind, there is no conflict. Now, you notice there's an asterisk here because it's, things are actually a little more complicated than what I described. This is a good rule of thumb. But as always, if you have any questions or any doubts, call Greg Rubens. That's what he does for a living, is to, among other things, decide this. Just a couple of closing thoughts here. I guess I have no closing thoughts. The clicker is not working. Let's see. There we go. Okay. Again, as I started out by saying, we're familiar with conflicts of interest when we have differences of opinion, but the law's view of a conflict of interest is more than just difference of opinion. It's difference of opinion driven by financial gain, the possibility of financial gain. And so, you have to keep that in mind. Hmm, okay. The other point I wanted to make is, people may not be aware of this, but the council actually deliberately appoints commissioners on all of our commissions to represent different viewpoints. We do that because we're trying to span the different perspectives that exist in the community. Do we cover everything? I don't think so, but I know we try to, and that's certainly our goal. Do we also want to make sure that different viewpoints are expressed and balanced in the decision-making process? I know I sure do. I'm not trying to leave my colleagues out of that. It's just I can't speak for them. I don't speak for the council. I'm just telling you what my thoughts are. So, basically, I appreciate the opportunity to educate folks on this a little bit. Bottom line, if there's not money, it's very unlikely to be a conflict. If you have any questions or you think there might be some money involved, get in touch with Greg. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I had the opportunity to attend our San Carlos Museum Holiday Open House a couple of weeks ago. If you haven't been over there, it's right next to the fire station on Laurel Street. Got a lot of great artifacts. The committee is, that runs it, is basically docents that have the museum open, I think it's a couple Saturdays a month. And we encourage you to go by, and they can always use volunteers. I will mention that the new president of the museum docents is my wife, so congratulations to her. It's her first presidential.
Is that a conflict of interest?
Do you salute her when she comes in the door?
Whatever she wants. A couple of other things, just a couple of chamber things. The chamber started this thing called Coffee with a Council Member, and I went to my first one last Thursday. We just met at Le Boulanger, and there was about six members of the business community there. They had some very interesting points of concern that they wanted us to hear. They brought up the fact that even though we have mixers, that those are really more social events, and they don't really have an opportunity to talk about the things that are of interest to them. And so, it was a great exchange of ideas, and I thank all those that came. I also want to thank Tom Davids. I think, there you are, Tom. Thank you for arranging that. I just thought it was great. It was good to meet people and hear things that you don't normally hear from the business community, and we came up with a couple of good ideas that I think are going to be implemented. And the second thing is, I attended the wine stroll, again, a chamber event that was put on yesterday. There were, I don't know, maybe 21 businesses on Laurel Street, San Carlos Avenue, and El Camino, that were, that were open on Sunday. They had at least 19 or 20 different wineries, some of which are located right here in San Carlos, were becoming known as a wine center, I guess. But it was, it was a great chamber event. It was nice to see a lot of people I didn't know lived in town. Actually, I didn't, I don't know if they do or not, but I saw a lot of people I hadn't previously seen, so it was a great way to bring people out. And I do know that Brian was there, Brian's wife was there, and she enjoyed herself as well, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Matt?
So, I thought I had gotten all my ethics training last Friday, but come here tonight and get more. I just wanted to thank San Carlos for helping my wife and I celebrate her birthday last Friday, it was her birthday, and we went to CASK and had a great time. And then, you know, when you're married and so forth, your wife's birthday is not really one day, it's, you know, multiple days. So, on Saturday, we went to Pina Charias, and that was also a fun time. We did a lot of things, actually, but those two we did in San Carlos, and it was great fun, and it's just wonderful to walk down downtown like that. And, of course, while we went down on Friday, the Holiday Lights event was going on, so, you know, got to see a bunch of people and say hi and so forth. So, thank you, San Carlos, for helping us celebrate. That's all I have.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And then, I just wanted to share a couple photos from the week. So, I was out at the farmer's market last time of the year and was joined by public work staff, so I really appreciate them coming out. It was a, it was a cold weekend, but we had a lot of good people stop by with questions and positive feedback and ideas. I wanted our colleagues to know, if you walk outside of City Hall, you'll see a sign that says that we are now a bicycle-friendly community. We got a bronze award from the League of American Bicycleists for a lot of bicycle-friendly policies, including bike lanes as part of the East Side Connect improvements and our green bike lanes that we put on San Carlos Avenue. So, we had a nice little event. We were joined by some local bicyclists, some folks from the Sheriff's Department, and Shiloh Ballard from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. And then, finally, I also had an opportunity to stop by the night of Holiday Lights, met some new friends, the Grinch and the Snow King. But I really wanted to compliment Amy and the Park and Rec staff and Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, everybody who was out and helped out with that event. It was a great event. I've heard just a lot of positive feedback from all throughout the community. It was also a very, very cold night, but it was, it was packed, and I think these kinds of events are what makes our community so great, so. So, thank you. We will now move on to staff comments on city administrative business. Jeff?
No comments from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now is the time for public comment on items not on the agenda. I have one speaker card this evening. It is for, from Laura Finucci. Come on up. Good evening, Laura.
Hi, Mayor Johnson, members of the council and city staff. Laura Finucci from Hip Housing, here tonight to give you your 2017 Hip Housing calendar. We did have a winner from San Carlos. She's a little kindergartner. She couldn't make it this evening, but she's featured on the month of August. Next year, I'm going to bring the picture for your big screen up here. I think that would be great. But her name is Daniella. She's in kindergarten, and she says, "My home means to that I get a chance to rest and share things with my parents and hug them." So, we met her at our holiday party last Wednesday, where all the kids came and they read their quotes and were honored for their participation in our calendar contest, which raises awareness about our home-sharing program, our properties, and also our self-sufficiency program for families with children. It was an amazing year for Hip Housing. We moved our office, we'd been in for over 30 years, to another location in San Mateo, so all of our properties, management staff, and our administrative staff could be together. We also purchased a 16-unit apartment building in San Mateo. We just recently required a four-bedroom home in East Menlo Park. It'll be our fourth group-share property for our self-sufficiency program, and we have two single moms moving in before the holidays, so we're really happy about that. We also launched our home-sharing marketing campaign to increase the pool of home providers who have a room for rent in their home. So, if you're driving southbound on 101 between Holly and Whipple on the east side, you'll see a huge billboard announcing our home-sharing program, and in the north county, you'll see one on 280. And if you're shopping at Tamforan and Hillsdale, you'll also see our ads there as well. And I also had the opportunity to film a video for City Hall in Focus, which is on the city's website. So, we're very much thankful for the support you provide our organization. We have 54 people here in San Carlos who are utilizing our programs and living in our properties, so we can't do that good work and provide housing resources without all your support. So, wish you all happy holidays and a happy and healthy 2017. Thank you.
Excellent. Likewise. Thanks to you and to Hip Housing for all the work you do on, for our community. Ron, did you want to say a couple words?
I just wanted to thank Laura. Laura's been with Hip Housing a long time, since I was a board member 20 years ago, and Hip's always been near and dear to my heart. I was a board member, I think, for nine years, and I'm very proud to be an alum. And when I started, it was a tiny little organization, just trying to pull together a few home-sharing programs, and it's really impressive to see how well it's grown and all the people it serves, and I'm just so happy that you guys are doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Continued success.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay. We will, let's see. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on an item not on the agenda? All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless a member of the public or one of my colleagues wants to remove an item from the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Item B.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Item 7A.
All right.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Matt, did you want to make a statement on Item B, or would you like a report from staff, or how would you like to proceed?
No, I just pulled it separately so I could, because I don't want to consent to it, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Item 7B.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
No.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Now, we will move on to the main event of the evening, the reorganization of the city council. I want to thank, I see many friends in the audience tonight. I want to thank everybody for joining us. I want to recognize a couple of our colleagues from Belmont, Councilmember Doug Kim, Councilmember and Vice Mayor Charles Stone. Thanks for being here. Before we take nominations, I wanted to just take a couple minutes to reflect on the year, and I brought a few slides that I might share. Not those slides. Thanks. So, you know, 2016 has been marked as sort of a tumultuous year on the national political scene. But if, you know, I had to assess, since San Carlos, I think that we've had a pretty good year. We haven't always agreed on everything. We didn't get everything done that we set out to accomplish, but I think we've made significant progress on a lot of priorities that are important to our community. And, you know, it was really fun for me over the weekend to sit back and look through, you know, what did we work on? You know, what, what things did we accomplish that really had an impact on people's lives? So, in the spirit of David Letterman, I put together my top 10 list of areas where I'm really proud of what we accomplished. And as I say, you know, these aren't things that necessarily we all agreed on, but these, from where I sit, are things that I'm really happy of and proud of and are going to stay with me in the years to come. So, in the area of public safety, we, you know, if you went back a year ago, we had a big uptick in our burglaries, had a lot of people that were anxious in town. We packed this whole room, and then we packed, you know, other rooms with people coming out, saying, "What are you going to do about this?" And I think we responded really well, very assertively. You know, my thanks to Chief Rothfuss and your team. You really stepped up. We made some arrests. We engaged the community, and the burglary rate came down very quickly. We also added some funding for more crossing guards, added more crossing guard locations to make sure that kids are safe when they get to school, when they walk to school. We took some considerable steps on fiscal responsibility. We changed our budget process. We added new performance metrics, which was something that I was really happy to see. And then, we increased our rainy day fund from 10% of the budget to 12% of the budget, 12.5% of our budget, to make sure that we have funds available even when the economy is not so hot. We've upgraded some parks and facilities. We did a grand opening of our newly remodeled Adult Community Center, which is very popular and beloved by many in our community. And we took the step of choosing a final design, just at our last meeting, for the new Highlands Park Playground, which is going to be under construction soon and open next We've taken, I think, an important step in environmental stewardship. We joined with 20 cities in San Mateo County to create Peninsula Clean Energy, which is going to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our county. And then, we moved our city up to the highest tier, which is called the Eco 100 Plan, which means that every city facility, every street light, every traffic light in town is now powered with 100% greenhouse gas-free renewable energy. We took steps to beautify our city, and we engaged our community in a public art project. We advertised and got people to participate in the competition to paint utility boxes all over town. Ron served on the committee, and I think it's been a really beautiful addition to our city. A lot of people remark on it, and it just brings a lot of joy to our town. In the area of housing, you know, we're trying to do our part to address the regional housing crisis. We created new affordable housing fees on commercial development that are specifically earmarked for building new affordable housing. And then, we, under construction, as we speak, there's about 300 new units of housing in San Carlos, with the Wheeler Plaza and Transit Village projects. Click. There we go. One of the things that I'm really proud of is, you know, we've had an engaged community in San Carlos, but really channeled that engagement to try to get people to learn more about how their local government works. Staff did a great job of setting up the San Carlos Citizens Academy, which was oversubscribed. We now have a waitlist for future sessions, which was an eight-week course to learn about how your local government works, and I think it's been wildly successful. On downtown, we passed an ordinance to require public review before any chain store can move downtown, with an effort to keep a mix of locally-owned small businesses, which has defined our town for a long time. To protect our neighborhoods from overdevelopment, we put in place a moratorium on lot splits, and we started a public process to look at home-size limits, strengthening those a bit, to try and keep, you know, the calm, welcoming feel of our neighborhoods with us for many generations to come. And then, finally, to help alleviate traffic, we added two important new public transportation options in our city. We have a new Line 61 bus, which serves a number of our schools, which has been wildly popular. And we added a new Caltrain commuter shuttle, which picks people up and takes them to east-side businesses. So, you know, all in all, I think that we can, I think that we can all be proud of the work that we've done this year. We made a lot of progress for our community. As with anything, it is a team effort. It involves the city council, our staff, many members of our community who get involved and have advocated, and I want to thank everybody who's worked so hard to help make our community such a great place and move it a little bit forward this year. As for me, I've spent a lot of my time out in the community, trying to do as much public outreach as I can. These are a few shots from the air. And I have to say, you know, it's, on a personal level, it's been transformational for me to have an opportunity to spend time with different people from, you know, people who are, you know, nearing their 100th birthday at the Elms, to kindergartners and everyone in between. I've really felt the warmth of the spirit of San Carlos, our community-minded culture, our sense of volunteerism. It's been very uplifting, and I think I come away feeling every day how lucky I am, how lucky we all are to live in such a wonderful community. I want to just take, you know, a final note before I hand the reins over to somebody else to thank my family who are in the back there. Hi, guys. You know, this is, it's a tough job, and it takes, it takes a lot of work, and I couldn't have done it without the support of Selena and Josephine and Ellis, who have been with me every day, helping out, making, making room and time, and listening, and giving me suggestions. So, I really appreciate you guys, and I love you very much. So, I just want to say, you know, thank you to everybody. It's been a great year as mayor, and I look forward to next year and, and all the progress that we're going to make together. So, thanks very much. So, with that, we will move on to, are there any nominations for the new mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Bob Griselli as our next mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Any discussion? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Congratulations. Crystal is going to administer the oath.
I think probably here is about the best view. Bob Griselli, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, Cameron. I'll have some comments in a minute. The next item on the agenda is Item 8B, which is the new mayor to call for nominations for vice mayor. So, nominations are now open for vice mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Matt Gocut for vice mayor.
All right.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? If not, nominations are closed. Crystal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gocut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
So, it says here at ETC that I'm supposed to make some comments. Oh, wait. Go ahead. But I thought I was the mayor. I thought I could, oh, I guess not. Sorry about that, Matt.
You just want to eat.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I do.
Okay, Matt Gocut, if you can raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance, and allegiance to the State of California and the Constitu-, I'm sorry, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge duties for which you are about to enter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank Cameron. I thought you did, honestly, a terrific job of being involved in the community. We saw the pictures, but there was a lot more things that he did. He's a representative on the Transportation Commission. He's on the Energy Board. I don't know how he holds a job, quite honestly, a real job. And I don't know how, you must have a picture of him in the house, because I can't believe he's home very much, but seriously, did a great job. And as involved as any mayor I've ever seen in this community. So I wanted to thank you personally for that. Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for electing me the mayor of San Carlos. I've had an opportunity to do this a couple of other times, and it's still an honor to be the mayor here. I take on this responsibility, knowing that I represent the city and its citizens in the best possible way, always remembering that it's the people of San Carlos whom I'm acting for, not myself, not the staff, not outside interests, but those who live here. Usually when a new mayor is elected, he or she begins their comments about what he or she is going to accomplish this coming year, what new grandiose plans they have, what great changes will be in store, et cetera. I will be taking a different path. I believe that we have to slow down a little bit and take a breath in San Carlos. Our economy is booming. We have a new hotel being built, with possibly two more on the drawing board. We have a car dealership being built. We have a new Orchard Supply and Linsell Garden materials that have moved into town. And Laurel Street, as was mentioned, is brimming with activity every night. And of course, with all the activity, we have more traffic, seemingly less parking and more people visiting us to see what a great town that we have. Oh, and did I mention the new construction going on? Is there a square block without a green fence on it in San Carlos? I'm not sure there is. As was mentioned, we have 200 rental units going up on the El Camino Real, 100 condominiums in Wheeler Plaza, and countless remodels and tear downs all over San Carlos. We are the center of the Silicon Valley bubble. I've heard from many people that the ambiance of San Carlos is disappearing, but change is always inevitable. It's how we manage that change that will define our city. If new businesses want to relocate to our town, do we turn them away? If a family wants to add a bedroom to their home, do we say no? Our demographics are changing. Our school districts are planning new schools for the influx of young families. Do we not provide quality education for our children? So what can we do? Well, first, I think we have to look inward. What services should the city provide? And how do we provide them? And at what cost to the taxpayers? My thoughts that are in 2017 would be a year of identification. I asked my colleagues on the dais to reexamine all our priorities and identify the few that really need to be accomplished this year. Our great staff is already looking at some major prospects, projects, rather, for the next year, generated from both the council's ideas and wishes and from external forces of an overheated economy. The last thing I think we want to do is to so overload our staff that basic services provided by the city begin to crack or completely fail. In my 33 years as a resident of San Carlos and 12 years as a councilman, there have been a lot of change in San Carlos. But let, but let's not let change be our master. Let it be our servant. I ask all the citizens of San Carlos to join me in rebooting our city, to continue to make it the great place that we all love. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is comments by council members. So, Councilmember Obert, would you start?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. Good words. And thank you too, Cameron, for the great job you did as mayor. I did get a kick out of all the pictures and whatnot over the year. And more importantly, I think the outreach you did is excellent and sets a standard, a high standard that hopefully we will all be able to follow. I look forward to us working together over the next year, and we do have a number of things coming before us, and hopefully we'll have time to make some good decisions here to benefit the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, to Cameron, I was trying to think, well, what am I going to say about him tonight? And I couldn't think of anything, because there were so many things to talk about. But four things come to mind. First one is growth. I mean, he's the tallest member on the council. He hasn't grown any taller, but been on the council, what, three years now? I've seen a lot of personal growth in him. He's actually one year older than my son would be. So forgive me if I kind of look on him that sometimes as a son. And when I, when I've watched him over the last three years, I've seen a lot of personal growth in the way he's handled himself, the way he handles his interactions with other people, other members of the council and the community. And I'm very proud of him for that. Second thing is engagement. I'm not sure I've seen anyone as engaged in the community in the last year as he has, as he has been. Like Bob said, there must be a picture on the wall at home that Selena can look at, because he was everywhere this year. I just think that is a great thing, and having immediately preceded him as mayor, it's not an easy job. You think your job is just to run the meeting, but it's, but it is to be the public face of the community. And I just think he did a great job of being engaged. The other thing that I think about is patience. There were a lot of, there were not as many contentious meetings this year as the prior year, but there were a few, and there were some times when there were some animated people in the audience. And I love the way he just engaged, he engaged with them and displayed a lot of patience in, in his approach to the meetings and managing the whole process and managing the public comment period. And the last thing I just want to say is, I just thought that Cameron's very thoughtful. I mean, he likes to, what is that comment you like to say? It's, he's given it a lot of thought or persuaded. Presuaded. I love that term. Showed a great willingness to be flexible and change his mind when he, when facts are presented to him that he realizes were different than the, than the facts that he saw at the beginning. So I think we've just been incredibly fortunate to have a year of a very young man who has done an outstanding job. I think we all have a lot to be proud of, so. Thank you, Cameron. Very proud of you. And then, finally, on to Bob. Known Bob a long time, maybe, what, 20-plus years, maybe longer. He's been mayor before. It will be a contrast, but I like the fact that, you know, Bob's done it before. There's nothing that surprises him. And he has a good, a good way of managing not only the council, but he works well with staff, he works well with the public. And I'm really looking forward to Bob ending meetings at 8:35 or 8:40. So, anyway, congratulations, Bob.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that. Councilmember Johnson, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to you, Bob. I've learned a lot from you, and I'm really excited for the year ahead. You know, the thing about Bob is, he's very, you know, efficient with the way he runs meetings. He can come off sometimes with a slightly gruff exterior if he gets a little impatient or the meeting runs long. But, I mean, he has one of the warmest hearts that I've ever seen. And, you know, as I've gotten to know you and see all the volunteer work that you've done, I, you know, I really, really appreciate the service that you've done, not just to our city, but beyond. And I think you set a great example for our town. And then, you know, lastly, I think you are, you have great experience and wisdom when it comes to local government and how things ought to go, and you treat everybody with a lot of respect. I think when I initially joined the council, I had a little bit, shall we say, naivete of how things might go and how quickly, and maybe dismissed that when you try to push things too far too fast, that people would just go along with it. And, you know, every time that you've raised concerns, more often than not, they prove to be right. So I think it's a great time for you to take over, and I've learned a lot from you, and I think we're fortunate to have you this year as mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor Growcut, comments?
Thank you. Most of what Ron said sort of stole my thunder, in a way. No, it's all right. I'll just put it in my own way. I look back on the year and Cameron's job as mayor. I can honestly say, and, you know, I've seen a lot of mayors. I came on the council in 2001, so I've been under quite a few mayors. And Cameron, you know, this is an honest compliment. I've never seen anybody do the job of mayor with such grace and aptitude as you have. And, you know, I know you and I, we don't always agree, and of course, I, you know, that's, that's just me, that four-one vote thing that goes on sometimes. But just the way you treated the job from the dais, always being fair with people, letting them get their comments out and so forth, the patience that you've shown. But to me, the reason I say what I do about doing it with grace is because, as Mr. Collins alluded to, you know, my estimation of what it means to be mayor is to run these meetings and then to be the face of the community and be out there. And you, you know, you, with what you've shown, with your, with your slides and so forth, that's something that you did with great aplomb and, you know, very much dedication, a lot of dedication to the city. And I saw that, I recognized it, and I appreciate it very much, what you did this last year.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. The rest of my comments, just come at this from a little bit of a personal level. Last year at this time, I was somewhere in my cancer treatment, and it was, it was a tough year. There were meetings that I missed and was not, I couldn't be here. But more than just looking at myself and what I went through personally for the year, the thing that I want, that I want to mention that hasn't been mentioned is some of the people that are missing from city staff that we lost this last year to retirement. And that is, the person that comes to mind mostly for me is Christine Boland. Christine first served the city as a, as a city clerk, I believe, when she first came on, and then took over the Parks and Rec Department, the project that Cameron showed in his slides with the community, the Adult Community Center next door. So much of that work and management was under her time. I will never forget running into Christine and her husband at Stanford. I was out taking one of my walks around the fountain, around the courtyard, and I ran into them there. And of course, as many people know, her husband was there for, waiting for a heart transplant, which he finally did get. But mostly because of her family situation and taking care of her husband is why she retired from the city. But she's missed. The other person I think of is Frank. And I think it was in this last year, it might have been the year before, but we dedicated a park to him in the downtown. And I miss Frank. I miss going downtown and seeing him walking Laurel Street and guarding it with all his heart. He was a great member of this community, and for me, he'll always be missed. He's, he was emblematic of what it means to be a San Carlin. So I just wanted to mention those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else have anything to say? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting to the foyer.